Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Board Supervisor's Special Meeting for June 23rd, 2020. First thing on our agenda is to have a call to order and a pledge of allegiance of the United States. And Mrs. Oats, would you lead us in that, please?
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Oats. Before we get started on the public hearing, I've got a couple of things that I've got to say, talk about. Take two or three minutes of your time. Mr. Kushner, would you come up to the podium, please? I want you to know that last week, you were in the meeting here, and you were given a disservice. And that happened by me. You did not get the opportunity to speak as long as you wanted to speak, and I want you to publicly know that I am sorry for doing that. The goal here is to let everybody talk as much as they can, and I know that we have changed that rule. We are freedom. We speak more. We allow more conversation. And we have let the pendulum swing a long way to the other way. So now, we're going to have to bring it back just a little. Your ability to speak is terrific. I like it, as well as I do every other person. But I wanted you to know I'm sorry for cutting you off, actually.
I accept your apology. Thank you very much.
Thank you. When we're talking... When we're listening to everybody, it's very important that we listen. And it's hard for us to listen when we get frustrating comments. And we have let some of the comments come at the expense of our county employees. I want you to know that I personally, and I believe that I'm... Hopefully, I'm speaking for everybody. I believe in the people that are doing their jobs here every day. Without them, our government will fail. With some of the people that are being questioned, talked about, slandered, whatever, whether they get hit by a bus, our government will continue because of the good people that are doing their job. And I would like for us to be as courteous to them as we are to you. You can talk to me any way that you want to. You can call me. I'll be happy to visit with you. I'll sit down with you, and I'll let you direct me all evening long. But in here, this is us. We have to make decisions every single day that affect everybody in the county. And I would like for the decorum in our room to be better than it is. We have swung the wrong way. So help me help you continue to be open and free to speak and say anything that you want. But when you start trashing our people, I'm going to stop you, and I'm going to ask you to leave. I hope everybody understands that. So with that being said, thank you very much. That's all I've got to say about it. Next on our agenda is a public hearing for the management and leasing agreements with Virginia Golf LCC for the Front Row Golf Club. Mr. Lynch or Mr. Stannen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, I pinch hitting for Mr. Lynch, who cannot be here this evening. Back in June of 2017, Warren County issued a request for proposal seeking proposals from qualified individuals or businesses to lease and manage the Front Row Golf Club located at 902 Country Club Road in Front Row, Virginia. Club has been owned and operated by the county since 2005. While the club has significant historical value, has great beauty, it has been operating at a financial loss. Since the time the original RFP was issued, the county has released, I believe, five additional RFPs in an effort to find individual or business that has both management experience and financial capabilities to take over the course operations, preserving the club while reducing the cost to the county. The most recent RFP that was issued in April 2020 resulted in the submission of one proposal from Virginia Golf LLC. The Virginia Golf LLC proposal outlines a variety of options to improve the course and grow the game of golf for the entire community. Virginia Code Section 15.2-1800 provides that the county must have a public hearing prior to taking any action to adopt a proposed lease. This public hearing has been properly advertised, and staff have welcomed comments that the public may have on the proposed project. Some terms of the proposed lease and management agreement are as follows. Virginia Golf LLC will assume the golf cart lease. This represents the savings of about $20,000 of what the county would have to pay. We have one more year on a five-year lease that begins this summer. If we cancel that, we have to pay the buyout. The lease is non-cancelable per the agreement with county after the rise of golf. Other terms, the county will continue to pick trash... Let me preface it this way. If the golf... County closes the golf course that ended June, county staff has assumed that certain things would happen. We would probably still have boating memberships down there. We would probably still lease out the hall for events at the club. That we would continue to maintain the trail along the river. That we would still do some basic mowing around the edges. Do a bush hog of the main property several times a year to keep it from growing up a treat. So with that said, based on their original proposal and some of the back and forth with them, the county would agree to pick up trash at the boat ramp, trailhead area, which we would pick up anyway. The county will continue to pay a portion of the clubhouse electric, assuming that we would have to maintain the conditions of the building, keep it from freezing, those types of things. Virginia Golf LLC will be allowed to borrow county equipment as needed from the county maintenance shed. The county will turn over the clubhouse, kitchen, and banquet room in good order. The county will leave the computer in place at the clubhouse. County will leave the surveillance system in place at the clubhouse. County will continue to do the edge cleaning on the sides of trails, the routine county maintenance. County will take care of the lower electric meter at the boat ramp, trailhead parking lot. County will leave the existing maintenance equipment in place in the maintenance sheds. County will continue to service the porta potties at the boat ramp. County will fix some of the greatest concerns, that the pipe outfalls along holes number one and two from the B-DOT pipes. The county will continue plowing snow for the parking lots. The county will repair the potholes in the parking lots. The county will repair the lower asphalt pavement from the clubhouse to the lower course parking lot via hole number nine. County will perform spot repairs on cart paths. County will provide access for continued use of county propane, diesel, gas tanks. Virginia Golf LLC will buy the fuel when refilling is needed, they just use the tanks. The county will maintain the irrigation pump station. The county will de-clean the clubhouse prior to turnover. County will turn over equipment in the clubhouse, the kitchen, banquet room, and the repair. County will maintain equipment in the clubhouse. County will take care of the maintenance for a golf cart display out on Winchester Road. That's actually as part of all the golf courses to showcase Warren County's golfing. County will contribute $5,000 per year for chemicals during the term of the agreement and a extension up to $10,000 total for any needed equipment repairs during the first two years, $10,000 for utilities per year for the first two years, and all of the terms of Warren County recommendations in that Virginia Golf LLC contract request spreadsheet. The total estimated annual cost accounting of the proposals is $15,000, including $10,000 utilities, $5,000 for chemicals per year for the correct budget for the first two years, up to $10,000 for equipment repair over that period, and then $5,000 to the end of the lease for chemicals and fertilizer. Also, employee time, material, and other costs to perform the other terms that the agreement has outlined. As indicated, for the Parks Direct Department, Mr. Lynch put together a spreadsheet. The county already closed the facility in July 1. I've indicated an annual cost of approximately $38,927.8 for the basic maintenance. That's the first year, and that includes the golf course, cart lease. You would remove that $20,000 after that point. This is the total cost, and it's not including any revenue for voting memberships or banquet hall amount, which would help run down the course cost. At the end of the initial three-year term, Virginia Golf LLC will have the opportunity to renew for three additional three-year terms. So with that, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we'd be happy to try to answer any questions that I could. Mr. Hamm, who has been working on this, cannot be here this evening. He has another meeting, and as I said, Mr. Lynch was unable to be here, but I'd be happy to pinch hit.
Any questions or concerns from the board yet? I think you said, would the applicant here come forward and speak?
Yes, thank you. Don't worry, I've got this huge presentation. Not like last time. Thanks for having us tonight again, and we appreciate the time. We have a quick video that we'd like to play. This is my... This is partner Ray Nash, who is the present superintendent out there. And I'm presently an employee slash volunteer up there this time. And this would tell the story, hopefully, a little bit about what my profession is.
Warren County is home to almost 50 miles along the Shenandoah, and it's served as a vital natural recreational resource for the community. Human activity and settlement along the Shenandoah began around 11,000 years ago. 10,000 years ago, the Thalia Indians had completed construction of the Thunderbird, a site presently located at the recreational center of Front Royal and the oldest and permanent structure in both America and east of the Mississippi. Not unlike many American towns, the streets of Newtown, present-day Front Royal, with all of the trading that was established by the Native Americans in the area. In the late 1700s, the Shenandoah River quickly became a major commercial route in the valley. George V. Ash, born in 1802, carved down a life for himself and his young family near the banks of the Shenandoah on land that is now the historic recreational center of Front Royal and the Front Royal Golf Course. He and his wife Elizabeth Ann Ash farmed and raised a family, including Emily J. Ash, John Wagner Ash, and Mary Helen Ash. Today, they are still buried in a cemetery located at the golf course between the fifth and eighth fairways, respectively tucked behind the original fieldstone walls. Their granddaughter, Bologna Elizabeth Ash Mayhew, was buried at the site in 1921. Fast forward four years. In 1925, Mr. Willie Carson tragically lost his son, Will, to pneumonia after Willie gone swimming in the Shenandoah. Mr. Carson vowed that never again swimming in the river be the only option for the citizens of the county of Warren. In 1933, Mr. Carson spent time with President Prentice D. Roosevelt at Camp Rattan in Virginia's Blue Ridge Mountains. At that time, he was able to convince the president to put the State Conservation Corps to work establishing the state parks in Virginia. Out of that same initiative, the recreational center of Front Royal and the Front Royal Golf Course was built by the CCC. Mr. Carson wanted the recreational center to serve as a memorial to their own son, and to this day is designated as a Virginia historic landmark. The Front Royal Golf Course was modeled after the original county courses in Ireland, and to a large extent reflects Mr. Carson's original design. Looking at the history of the golf course and its founder, we can better understand Mr. Carson's original vision. Rather than functioning as just a golf course, Mr. Carson wanted the facility to be a total recreational center where the citizens of the county of Warren can relax and rejuvenate in a peaceful and meaningful way. In the spirit of Mr. Carson's original vision, Virginia Golf LLC strives to help local communities make golf and other recreational opportunities accessible to the avid citizen. We see this project as a mission. To retool operations of the Front Royal Golf Course to not only make the facility profitable, but also enhance the lives of the citizens of the county of Warren by providing an inviting and affordable recreational outlet for golf, fishing, and boating. By implementing a balanced approach by Mr. Carson's, we can build goodwill in the community, sustain creative jobs, and strengthen the county's tax base. Through our public-private partnership, we want to help our county tell the story of our rich history and educate our youth on horticulture and wildlife. Our goal is to enhance private county by helping teach our youth also that one person can make a difference by telling the story of Mr. Willie Carson and how his hard work and vision led to the development of the historic recreational center of Front Royal and Front Royal Golf Course.
Thanks so much, Emily. I'd also like to thank my son Zachary Webb, that goes for his work on that Women's Mary Class of 2015. So he did a lot of hard work on that project instead of family affair. That capitalized as well, I raise my vision as the course. It's more than the course, it's the whole thing. It's the recreational center, it's the history, it's the historical tourism that's telling the story, it's working with schools, it's working and doing field trips out there. It's the whole package. It's not just about golf. And I understand the trepidation about funding a golf course. But if it was just a golf course, I think that would be more of an issue. There's just so much more than that. Some of the objections that I heard last time I was here, one of them was, I don't think this can make money. And I didn't. I'm not a player anymore, but I was the top, in the top 1% in the world in the area, international. So I think I have the skill set to build that banquet room. That's Asian America, Pacific Europe, Latin America, and the Americas. I think I have the skill set to fill that banquet room and do the things we need to do to make that course profitable. And a submission, I think, for me and Ray. So Ray's got the 30-year skill set on the golf side, I have 30-year skill set on the other side. We have 208 signatures on a petition, which... Wow. I'm gonna have to go. Do you want to do these? And I brought the banquet book because I already have four pre-sales on the banquet ground, and one pre-sale on a tournament. So there are a number of things that I think we can do to make the course make money. The other thing we heard last week, or last time we were together, was, I don't want to spend another $25 on that course. And I did that, and I'm a fiscal conservative too. And, you know, it makes me want to buy clubs, but I don't want to spend another $25 on that course. And, you know, I get that, but it's... Again, so much more than the golf course, it's the recreational center, it's the hiking, the boating. I just dug one, took it there. It's everything that's out there. So we're going to have to subsidize a golf course with the old car. It's a total recreational package and historical package for the county, and that historical tourism is a big deal. Number three, unfair competition. You know, I'm really flattered that another golf course owner in town, and she's a nice lady, just another thinks that we're competition. I'm totally flattered by that. But I peeked at her facility the other day. It's beautiful out there, and it's a... Actually, I just drove by, and it's a high-end, it's a country club. It's not a... We're not a country club anymore. We're not trying to run it as a country club. We are the Front Royal Recreational Center, the historic Front Royal Recreational Center and Golf Course. So, you know, flattered that we might be considered competition for that. Yeah, it would be unfair if the county was subsidizing something that's going to compete as an alternative golf course center. But I've studied this thing called game theory, and I think everybody's heard about game theory, and game theory is basically that, you know what? If we all work together as golf course people, we can make more money for the county, and we can help each other. So I wouldn't look at us as competition. Flattered by it, but I wouldn't look at us as competition for other golf courses. There can be synergistic effect. Again, total recreational center. Fourth thing, which was actually considered sported, you know, what do... Ray and I are basically working for free. We hope we can not have to do that, but we're basically... You know, that's how we're going to make money too. And you've got two people right on that balance sheet that are actually working for free, at first at least. So then, let's start with the other aspect of what we're doing out there. What do 10 free park rangers mean to the county? Here's the value. Here's the public-private partnership. We're going to be out there telling the story. Tell them the story. Tell them the story of the history of Thalia Indians. Ray mentioned that we're going to do some horticulture tours out there for the kids at school. Hey, it might be good, and then no, it probably is not, it is. So there are a number of things we can do to partner with the county. Dolores, I was on Virginia Tourism Board when I was Director of Marketing at the West Fields Marriott. So, you know, there are a number of things I can do. I have a lot of friends in Richmond that we can do to partner together to generate business for the county for all the golf courses. So those were the objections, so I just wanted to kind of review those, and just put a little pot into that. Another thing is, I wanted to talk about the jobs in the county. We'll be employing 10 people out there. And if the county pulls the plug on that golf course, well, Doug mentioned the $20,000, you know, non-cancelable golf cart lease right off the bat, that if you have to spend a cancel of that lease, you're going to have to spend that whether you vote us down or vote us up. That's 20 grand that's just lost. But it's actually more like 25, because I'll leave Louisiana, but the thing is, 2 grand a month, 2,000 a month. So it's close to 24. So, you know, by a conservative, we'll say $20,000. But, you know, we're also putting in 10 jobs there. So what do 10 jobs mean? And I found an old article in Time Magazine this morning. It's from 2009, remember the last economic downturn we had? And it says, the trade, it calls, it talks about the triple effect. "An unhealthy economy, a single lost job, becomes infectious, combined with others and spreading through family, neighborhood, and community. Widespread cutbacks extending by families mean lower demand for businesses and lower tax revenues for the government. This adult tightening means fewer car sales and fewer jobs." Car Carton Papers, this was a town in the Midwest. It means less government spending in infrastructure and other public services, including economic development. "The sum of that is less available work for job seekers, a perfect vicious circle. For a well-educated job loser, it can mean a permanent drop in earning power and standard of living a rehearsal of the American dream." So I thought that was very profound. And, you know, 10 jobs doesn't sound like a lot of jobs. But these are people. These are real people. These are raised guys that are out there moaning every day. It was brutal out there today. This is our clubhouse guys. These are 10 jobs. This is the guy going down the street to buy a sub. You know, this is the guy going down the street to buy soda, you know, supporting all the business owners in the area. And, you know, yes, they, I think they actually play out of the golf courses too once in a while. So I want to talk about the job aspect too. And then, you know, again, we're going to be down there handing out maps. I don't think, I don't know if we can build a halfway house right away, but we're going to want to build a house down there, a little halfway house, so that we can hand out tourism maps. So people, if people come to the clubhouse, they have a lot of questions. You know, what about that part of the river? It is the deepest part of the Shenandoah, and that's why the boat ramps are popular. Where does the dam start? How far up can we go with that dam? Tell me about the trail. How far does it go? And the trail goes all the way over to the other part, Rockland. So it's really a great partnership for us to be able to hand out the maps, explain the trails, explain the river, explain how it all works for people, so that they can utilize it more. So again, it goes to that whole holistic public-private partnership with us that's way well beyond golf. It's hiking, boat hunting, and fishing, and, yeah, we haven't done golf. So so much more than that. We want to run it that way. Not as a country club. And I think that was the wrong branding for the course anymore. Baseball, we did fundraising for baseball last year, we'll continue to do that. Wagging for Dragons, that's supported by the Land and Shelter, we'll continue to do things like that. It's, again, it's a partnership. That's what a community public-private partnership is. How are we going to make money? Again, I talked last week about, we can manage it like a golf course for starts. I mean, they'd never have the staffing or the budget to put a manager in there. So with Ray and I are getting a superintendent and a general manager and a clubhouse manager, we're all going to be there. My wife, my lovely bride, Sean, is going to appear on Bookkeeper, we're going to treasure it as a family affair. And my sons are very talented writers, and as you can see, can do videos, and all kinds of wonderful things for us to help us. It was a family affair, and it's a, it's a community, it's really community service for us. It's, it's, it's way beyond golf. CRM system, you know, again, why not get your emails and send them in on the birthday and give a discount on the birthday, just like other good marketers do. I think we can, how we can make money, I think Dolores, you had a really good point last week, it's like, that's a pretty aggressive performer. Yeah, it is. I know. But you know what? I've thought about it a lot, and I almost redid it, and I'm like, nah, you know what? I think Donald will be back two times there. We can triple the banquet sales there. Again, I already have four pre-sales. We can do twice the number of food sales there, at least. We can do twice the number of tournaments. Already booked a tournament, you know, pre-booked a tournament, depending, I got to call tomorrow, tomorrow morning, based on how this is tonight. So then, of course, the ancillary revenue streams that we mentioned last week, again, I'm looking at it almost like a hotel property, and you don't want any unused space. You want to utilize every inch of your space to try to make it a revenue stream. So that's really it. Ray, you know, what do you have to add to that?
I think community services was important to me. I started as a teenager, a modest little nine-year-old course, and it made all the difference in my life. I mean, speaking to Louis and myself, we're not getting any younger. Our plan is to do what I've always done, is to train the next generation of golf course management workers. There's somebody in front of the world right now that can be running that property in five or six years, if I'm able to train them. Eleven, eleven of my former assistant superintendents are now active superintendents. I have a really good record of training young people and making a difference in their lives. I know Louis is fantastic, the way he does it from the front of the building. I know he'll make a good team. And I wouldn't have gotten involved in this if I didn't think this man could make a work of a lot of this.
Did I?
I've got plenty of other work to do, but this sort of nine-year-old course really is my passion, because it's where I came from. I've worked in courses all the way to the country of all fledge levels, and this is the place that for me to be right now, and I look to you as the opportunity. We won't let me down. Thank you.
Thanks, Ray. You know, I was telling Gary, I met Gary earlier today, and I was telling him about everybody's personal connection to this course. Ray's articulated a great personal connection that he has to the course. I have a great personal connection to the course. I was out there the other day, I'd, you know, two years ago when I was a member there, just walking to get these organs coming out, necessarily it's very hot, but just walking, and I was going to lose my family in the park. And it was a very difficult time. And I was talking to some people today, and they all had similar stories. There is a personal connection. Tony Bates administered golf here every morning. He lost, when he had surgery too, but he lost so many, 100,000 pounds or something, and he got his health back. People I think are going to get up today, and some will be against it, but I think some people will talk about a personal connection that they've had, of course, and what, of course, meaning has meant to them in their lives personally. And I think they're very powerful stories, and stories I think that reflect the tone of what we're all saying earlier about just respect, and how we're just moving in a brave direction in this county, making this such a great place to live. So just to settle the, I hope you will see a fifth to enter into this public-private partnership with us. We would, you know, as Ray said, we're not going to let you down. Thank you.
Does the board have any... Does the board have any questions or concerns that can be answered by the staff? Does the board have any, does the board have any questions or concerns that can be answered by the staff? I have one. You've got 208 signatures of people that are interested in the golf course. How many memberships do you have right now?
Well, we haven't been, thanks, Walt. We haven't been allowed to sell memberships all year because of what's pending. Because the course wasn't funded for the next fiscal year yet. So we have not been allowed to sell memberships. So great question. And actually, it's a, it's actually a, we have so much pent up demand for memberships. And that's gonna be a big part of our cash flow getting off the ground. So in addition to the things that, you know, the things Doug mentioned, you know, there are things, as you said, the county's, even if it's not a golf course, they're gonna have to do anyway. When the county's out $25,000 if they have to pay that lease cancel, you can do golf. So, you know, and that stuff is like, you can keep trails here. You're not gonna let it become a field. You're gonna, you have to do something there. So, you know, what we're doing is really a drop in the bucket. So to your point about the memberships, yeah, pin up demand, but that's gonna be what's gonna help us get off to a good start too. So I think we can sell probably, well, we have 208, even if we sell like 20% of that right off the bat. That's a nice little bit of quick cash flow to help us get off the ground. We just need the help initially to get, you know, the plane needs to get up to 60 miles an hour, Ray, it was said to, to get lift, right? So we just need to get lift. And that's the only reason we're asking for a little help upfront. And the little help we're asking for upfront, we feel, and we feel like we made a case for it, is a drop in the bucket compared to, you know, especially what we have to pay anyway. And certainly compared to what has been put out in the past, you know, for the golf course. Thank you, Walt.
Next question is for Mr. Stanton. Mr. Stanton, have you heard how we're going to fare with the, who actually owns the course, whether it's the county or whether it's the car park?
No, ultimately that won't be decided till, I think, October is the, our scheduled date for hearing and talking with the attorney and talking with Mr. Hamm. The attorney being the title insurance attorney who represents the county. I think they feel confident, but you gotta go through the process. So, you know, I think, and even the ownership, there is that still the aspect of uses of public recreational facility that's there. But again, that ultimate answer, we won't find out till later this year at then.
Okay. Then follow-up question for that would be, what happens if we don't hit, if we don't own it? What happens to these fine people that are putting up their own supply of savings?
It's my understanding that we can still, could maintain, it was still given to the public, to the citizens of Front Row of Warren County, the students of RMA for use as a public recreation facility, including golf. So I think even the ownership question were to go the other way, as long as it's still being maintained as a public golf course, then the lease could still stand. However, Mr. Hamm and I have had discussions. We would have to put protection language in there for the county as well. Obviously, if it's kind of pulled out from underneath of us, then if that's something we can do anything about. But, you know, I still think you have, as long as it's used as a public recreation facility and used for golf, I think it meets the intent of the original kind of license that was issued in 1930s. But as far as the ultimate ownership, that will be determined by the course.
Thank you. Gentlemen, if that happens, are you ready for that?
Yeah, thanks for asking, Walt. We sat down, actually, we sat down and I told you about my old family friend, I was attempting to be our attorney in the project in Downey, in Warrenton. And we sat down with Jim and that obviously came up. So, you know, we're willing to take that risk. I mean, honestly, I really wouldn't think, it's interesting, I think what happened was the county awakened the sleeping giant, excuse me, waking the sleeping giant, it's like sixty-four. Wakened the sleeping giant when they contacted the heirs. All of a sudden, you know, and I, honestly, my understanding is there, I may be wrong, there are no close heirs in the area. But these are probably people maybe that don't even understand Mr. Carson's story, but all of a sudden they're getting something at the house and says, hey, they made some money there. So, yeah, but, you know, my sense is because of, you know, the fact that the county's been maintaining, I'm not a lawyer, but the fact that the county's been maintaining it all these years. And the castle is clearly very stringent about how it has to be a golf course, you know. They're, I think they're gonna have a really hard time getting, you know, getting ownership of it. So whether that's, you know, determining, you know, but even if they do, I can't do anything with it but a golf course because goodness knows other people tried. And as a member, I got rings that paid for it at the house from lawyers. And clearly, people tried to make that, you know, the other zone that is something I didn't want for two years ago. And they lost, they just gave up. So my sense is unless that family, you know, came here to pull a miracle, I don't know how they're gonna get it. So I think that's a risk we're willing to take. We sat in Jim's office and that was the first thing, well, one of the first things he asked us. And we were both willing to take it. And thanks for asking, Walt. We appreciate it.
I have a question. So on this list of its contract requests, not all of them have dollar amounts. And the one that jumps out to me the most is this pump station, which I did a little research, could cost us a worth of $100,000 if in the future it's gonna need to be replaced. And so Mr. Fox is more of an expert in this area than I am, but $100,000 is what I was told that it was estimated to cost to replace it five years ago.
All I can speak to Ms. Oates is that I believe it's been, the motor and the pumper have been rebuilt since we've had it and we spent 10 or so thousand dollars. It wasn't 100, it wasn't 20, 30. The most expensive thing we've done out there was drilling a well, which cost us about $40,000 a few years back when the health department made us replace the well. And you had to drill about 700 feet or so to get water. But the pump, and granted, it's, you know, if you're talking about replacing the whole pump unit and everything, it can be more expensive than simply rebuilding the motor and the pump. But it has not cost us that amount in the past. I apologize because I can't put my finger in the exact number right now, but...
So eventually, though, it's gonna need to be replaced because how old is it?
And that pump that had been there before had probably run for 20 or more years. But again, yeah, at some point, we'll probably, and I wouldn't say necessarily replace, maybe rebuild the pump and the motor again, to keep it in operation, replace the impeller and whatever parts. But I would say it's probably gonna be more like maintaining it and part of that means it could be, you might have to replace the pump.
So what is the actual cost then that the county will install an intake extension with screen at the river intake to help prevent pump failure? So that has no dollar amount associated with it?
I think, and Ray, we were talking about just extending the intake pipe out a little farther into the river with the revised screen.
And that's not a critical thing. I installed, I went to Lowe's and bought some chicken iron and some netting and I put a screen in there. And we installed a filter last year that's eliminated 90% of that problem. That's something that's not, not a priority. As far as the pumps, I just wanna say, I've been in the business almost 40 years. I started watering golf courses at night when I was 15 and we bought the golf course and we ran it with water. I dealt with pump stations all my life. I put a very similar system into this new in 1990 in Crawford. And I know that pump very well. It's, you treat it very gently and delicately and you're lucky in this area that we get on average four inches of natural rain every year. All that pump station does is supplement the public interest that's provided. I'm very good about programming the satellites and adding that pump station running very gently, very consistently. It's just like a roller car, you don't wanna step on gas, you just let it coast. I've been doing that for a long time. I've had modern pump stations that will improve and I put one in in 2000, it cost over $400,000, so it's a very expensive pump. You don't need that here. This pump station waters 100 gallons a minute. That's not much water at all. And it's a critical concern to replace three years ago and I expect they have to.
So you don't consider this a whole car anymore?
Well, the pumps and the, the pumps and the motors certainly not quite the original infrastructure is still there. But we treat it gently. I went and watered three times this year, so that's pretty respectable. So that pump's only been running for maybe 18 hours when it was fourth of the eighth of July. So I treat it very gently. I'm pretty good at tracking rainfall. This course doesn't need a lot of water, it doesn't use a lot of water. And that's one of the things I do, is I try to take our natural resources and stretch them. Thank you.
Do we have insurance for lightning strikes, that kind of thing? Those are all, I mean, when you're dealing with pumps, they're unforeseen. The lights are on. I'm trying to be a good one. I'll talk up for lightning.
Do you want for facilities or people or both?
No, for the pump.
Yeah, we have insurance on the entire facility. I can certainly double check, but yes, I'm pretty sure we have.
I mean, those are unforeseen things and it's still on present, so, you know, having insurance for that helps. On the membership, what has the average membership been for the last five years or so?
Actually, you know what? Hannah, can you address that point? The average membership for the last five years? This is our volunteer.
Hi.
Come on up here. She's with you. Typically 40 to, I would say 60, moving in average, that's what I'd like to hear from her.
So we've got 208 signatures, about 40 to 60 people have maintained a membership of about 100.
Absolutely, oh yeah, absolutely. I think we'll get more because it's a young demographic in Front Row now, I think. And there are, and a lot of families and a lot of just people with husband and wives out there, the younger people, younger couples. We see a number of them out there. So I think we're gonna get a lot more, getting different looking membership out there, different demographic membership out there.
I think that the memberships over the last three or four years, they have had somewhat of a decline. And that's primarily because the course was somewhat in flux.
Correct.
So it was difficult to get somebody to buy a membership even though it would be refunded for unused portion. But I think if they, if the folks that signed a petition or other people out there, if they see there's gonna be some stability, I would hope that they will come forward and become members out there. Again, like I said, nobody wants to see something in flux. And I know when it's gonna, how long it's gonna keep running. So I think that's a big thing that's hurt the last three to four years as far as the membership numbers go.
I agree. And, you know, we only had, really, since two days after the last board meeting to get signatures for petitions, so we probably have a lot more. And most of them gave us their email addresses, which, you know, I sent out a little reminder, you know, about tonight, last night, and then this morning, or again this afternoon. But to give us their email addresses and whatnot, I think it speaks to when they trust us. Number two, they really want to see the course pass and become members to, I think, it's a situation.
I have another question. Number two is county will fix the drainage problems on holes one and two and there's no number, there's no dollar amount attached to that either.
So the discussion we've had back and forth with Louis and Ray has been, you know, ever since the shopping centers came in and some of that forested area was developed, we've seen additional water flow down across the golf course. And some of that, I think, is just, you know, they had, they couldn't release at any higher level of water than the pre-development level. But it's just, it's water that hits the road pavement all the way up from almost the roundabout all the way back down. The only thing that we've really promised is that we would go in there and try to dig out the outflow of the water pipe, place some riprap in there. So it'd be our staff with the backhoe trying to help making sure water isn't pond, it can flow kind of freely. We did a few years back, I think it's across hole number one, right? We had put a drain tile pipe and buried it, simply just dug it and buried it across hole number two to try to help facilitate water to move across the course and get out of the way. But the reality is, especially on hole number two, that there's a lot of rock in there and you can't really, you can't really go bury a 24-incher, so drainage line, so...
You don't need that. A four-inch drain, I put in miles of drainage and honestly, just tobacco or trencher with the rock deep on it, especially once we get in off-season, November, December. I put it in miles of drainage. This is an easy job. It's not, they have the equipment and I'm gonna have more time in the fall. It's an easy fix. And honestly, when I started in October 2018, we were in the middle of the wettest year, I believe on record, I think we had over 70-inch rainfall. And there were some problems on those holes. But with 4 inches of rain last year, there were very few days, it was actually too wet to support car traffic. But it's just the sensible thing to do to improve that drainage, especially off-season. They have the equipment, I have the experience. It's not a big deal. It's something I do at every course. From the data build, they always improve drainage. This is unfortunate that the parking lot just started dumping water into the golf course. We can fix it. We just capture that water, get it underground and let it run down the river. That's what you get.
Mr. Fox here. Yeah. Just wanted to make sure to get a clarification that the pump, was it rebuilt this last year or does, because this is to replace the pump station. And I assume that that would be the piping and everything until they...
Piping and everything should be fine, Ray. It's really, it's the motor and the pump itself.
Right, my understanding was, and it is a recent motor. I heard 2017 was, it was replaced before I came on board in October 2018.
So you're saying this is not correct and it does not need to be replaced?
Not right now.
No, it doesn't need to be replaced. It works fine. It started up and, you know, it's, we know how long a car is gonna keep running, we know how many more days on this earth we have. And at some point it will fail, but that's a tough pump station. It's been flooded more than a few times from what I understand. It's a Carol Children's pump that don't go anymore, but they're solid pumps and the fact that it's been on the edge of that river as long as it has and it still functions is kind of worrying to our wellers, those pumps that go.
I just got a message from Mr. Lance. He said he's bleeding between eight and $9,000. I knew it was kind of just on the ten that we rebuilt it last time.
Okay.
If they don't make those moves, those pumps anymore, how do you get requests of parts?
Well, they do make the pumps and the moves. It's a 30 horsepower electrical motor and then a pump.
Okay, I thought you just said they don't make those anymore.
Oh, the Carol Children's brand doesn't make it anymore, but there are, it's, it's a lot of standard off-the-shelf parts to make.
Okay, because I was, you know, after you said that, I thought, well, how are you gonna fix it if you can't? They're not making them, then what's making parts for them?
That's a great question. They're off-the-shelf parts. You can go to Ranger and get 99% of what you needed to make that pump station. It could not be, it is the simplest, I know you're not golf field, but it is the simplest, most humble pump station you will ever see in your life. It's perfect for that golf course because it does just what you need to do, no more than less. Pump stations get insanely inspected anymore, but you don't need that here. It's just a simple little nine-hole course and all you need is 100 gallons per minute of water working in the yard.
Any additional questions from the staff?
And the county is willing to provide about 10,000 for golf course chemical every year, is that what?
It was, they asked for 10, what we proposed was 5, Mr. Fox.
That's a great issue from now on.
That's correct. I don't, please.
You have, soon being superintendent, you have all the license and so forth to apply those and take care of the herbicide pesticides?
That's a great question. I have a commercial pesticide applicator. I'll be there. I've got my car, I'm just doing it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Maybe you should cut it already, but, I mean, number three, clearly state scandal not replace the pump. They will maintain it, but they're not gonna replace it. So it seems like it's almost a moot point.
Now, I'm not trying to be the doomsayer here, but I've never run a building where I didn't have to pay for everything. And I'm wondering, other than trying to get the best deal for your four, you...
And I'm wondering, other than trying to get the best deal for you, for you two and the community and the golf course, I understand all of that, but you're asking the county to do a lot, even though we realize that we're going to have to do something if we don't do anything at all. I would love to see you have more skin in the game, sir, or really would. And is this the best deal that you can offer to the county to make this work for you and for the county?
Well, here's a, you know, this, first of all, I would just change it up by saying, this is not in perpetuity. This is just to help us get marched. This has been a problem in the county for numerous years. So we're asking for a little help just for the first couple of years. This is not forever. So, yeah, because of all the unknowns and we're coming off of COVID, there are a lot of unknowns here too. So, yeah, I think we have a lot to think, to be honest with you, because there are just a number of risks. Can we do it? Yeah, based on our experience level, we're confident we can do it. But I think it's, I think our value proposition is strong. I mean, I think the last people that came in, I couldn't really, well, I'm not going to talk negative about anybody, but I don't think, before you put a real value proposition from anybody, we're offering, you know, not only to continue keeping your money, but as a total recreational center, you're getting free park ranger services, you're getting cultural tours, you're getting historical tours, you're getting promoting tourism in the county. You're getting it run from a different perspective that's never been tried before, never done before in the county. So by more skin in the game, you know, I honestly, I think that the spin, you know, Doug maybe could speak to this better, is so minimal compared to what you've spent in the past, number one. And number two, Doug and Dan are beating us up a lot. You know, if you look at the original things we were asking for, we deflected a lot. And in fact, the last thing we flexed off was the other day regarding golf parties. So that's a twenty-five thousand dollar, there's some skin in the game for you right there. There's a twenty-five thousand dollar right off the bat savings to the county, but the county was just going to have to throw out the door. Write a check for rising golf, I've heard Maryland, they're not even Virginia. Twenty-four, well, probably it was two thousand a month, it's more, twenty-four thousand. It's supposed to be twenty, so we'll just say, we'll say twenty. But that's a twenty thousand dollar hard dialing check to be cut. Whether you go, whether you keep it regardless of golf course or not. And so the golf course, we're trying to create a partnership where you get free park rangers, you get people up there you trust, who are going to be good stewards of the asset. You get people up there who are going to be good representatives to the county. You get people up there that are going to really do a great job of running it for you. And then, you know, if we can, and I, I'm not even saying I think, I know we can triple the banquet sales in there. That has been, you know, there's this thing called yield management in the hotel business. You know, a hotel room is perishable, is a perishable commodity by night, so are banquet rooms. So if you've lost the ability to sell that room when that clock rolls over to twelve oh one, you're never going to recoup that opportunity. You know how much lost money has come through that place? When you could have been keeping that banquet room full? When you could have been, you know, heads and beds, people's bodies in golf seats, okay? Not that much different. It's all about just doing the best you can with what you have and your management. And, yeah, it's, it's all the other things. Yeah, and we have to have a golf course.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns from the staff here? This public hearing is now open. Mrs. Shiroki, has anyone signed up?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Would you like me to read the emails to us or would you like me to call up the individuals who signed up first?
Let's go ahead and go through the emails as quickly as we can, please.
First email is from Ellis Wooton, Warren County Executive slash Board of Supervisors. I've been a Faukeer County resident for just over eight years now. In those eight years, my wife and two kids have played the Front Royal Golf Club course several times. I've also invited other friends and family to join us many times in playing such a wonderful course. The views are amazing and this is a great course for beginner golfers. We enjoy this course every time that we play. We actually just played nine holes on June twelfth. I am asking for you all to please consider allowing for this course to remain open and go into private operations. This course is affordable and is great for the community and surrounding communities. Next is Randy DeSantis. I am writing in hopes that the Front Royal Golf Club can be kept open. I understand that some current employees of the golf club have expressed an interest in taking it over. I have played there for the past ten years, usually once every week or so from May to October, though I haven't been able to play much in the last year or so due to back issues. However, my back has greatly improved and I was able to play much, and I was able to get out this past week for the first time this year and was looking forward to continuing in the fall. It has been a blessing for me in that it has been affordable and close enough that I can play nine holes and still get to my church office by eight and eight-thirty a.m. I must say that the condition of the course is the best I've ever seen it. I hope you will give the current employees an opportunity to keep the course open. If not, my playing of golf will be greatly curtailed. Next is from Mike Corrigan. I ask for your support to keep the Front Royal Golf Club open while negotiating its future. I've been a steady customer for many years. Next is Kevin Smith. I am emailing in support of the proposal by the current employees to save the golf course. I understand the need to make it at least break even and I'm okay with paying the increased price to continue to play. Don't overlook the additional revenue that is generated by the golfers for the surrounding businesses. I played yesterday, bought four mailboxes for my street at Lowe's, filled up the gas tank, and then had panned at Express Takeout. This is money that I would likely have spent in Winchester or in a city near another course. I hope you can find a solution to save the course. It does provide a service and exercise for a lot of people. Next is Roy Frye. Please accept the proposal by the current employees to save the great golf course. I am willing to pay more to play this course. Next is from Mike Ritter. I am emailing you today on behalf of the casual golfer, aging citizens, youth, and the loyal competitive golfers to the Front Royal Golf Club who enjoy the game of golf. I'm a competitive golfer and play Front Royal Golf Club at least a couple of times a month. I grew up in Warren County and was a member at one time. My father, a resident of Front Royal, still enjoys playing at the age of seventy-three, and Front Royal Golf Club is the only course that offers him that opportunity. This course caters more to the citizens in Front Royal than any other golf course in the area, and I play them all. The revolution happening in golf right now affords many of the above-mentioned golfers few opportunities to learn or continue to golf as the competitive golf courses in the area shun the slow players and new players, especially on prime weekend hours. I learned to play golf at Front Royal Golf Club, and each time I see a parent slash youth combo on that course, it reminds me of what the course offered me as a youth. A place to feel safe getting instruction and taking the time to learn. As far as the current operation of the Front Royal Golf Club, anyone, and I mean anyone, could be more profitable running that facility than what is currently taking place. I wish I was five years closer to semi-retirement. No effort to market, no effort to sell meeting or event space, no effort to police the course, no golf events, no lessons, barely functioning carts, no membership drives, zero onsite management, no food sales, and the list goes on. I feel money was wasted getting the course looking and maintained in such great shape on purpose as it was barely considered on how to get the dollar and the register. I guess the board does not want to be in the business, so let someone who does run the facility. With that said, the board has been presented with an opportunity by the very same people who know this place has potential to continue to serve the Warren County citizens and neighboring counties with very little financial burden. The very same people who have put this course in the best shape it has been in years. I'm confident based on the efforts they have shown you all with the condition of the course that they will be competent stewards of the course and lessen slash remove the burden from you, the board supervisors. I have never met them nor know them, but the proof is plain for everyone to see. The local courses report that they have not seen a golf explosion like this in the last twenty years. Shenandoah Golf Course had to order more carts to accommodate the overload. Golf is the perfect social distancing activity for recreation moving forward in this mid slash post-pandemic era, more so than the public pools you operate at a loss and may not even be able to be available this year. Golf is now essential for a healthy population and community. The world has changed, and this may not have aligned with your thinking over the years, but luckily this course is still open and has a chance to be a part of what the new outdoor recreation landscape will look like. Please consider supporting the proposal in front of you. I am confident that under any onsite management by people with a stake in the success of the course will attract more citizens and make you all proud to help preserve this landmark. Next is from Ernie Tugman. I still see all the taxpayers, all the money they play, they pay, and Warren County, Warren County out offer something for the residents. I can see how it's all about money coming to town and eat a lost thirty-one billion from ATA and Jennifer McDonald, thirty-one billion. There's a lot of things the park and rec have, they don't make much, make money. How much money they make on the skate ring in Rockland Park? They bought Rockland Park, like, we really need to get. How much money did they make on Rockland Park? Nothing, nothing. But you pick on the golf course, that land was donated by the Carsons. If the county can't keep up their deal, their end of the bargain, they need to give the property back to the Carsons, not make a dime from it. Next is Gary Gross. This golf course should be kept open. It is a beautiful course and an asset to the community. I'm sure that many residents and seniors enjoy the course and would be happy to volunteer to help cut costs. Please consider the options. Next is Dennis Dya, or Vayn, I apologize. I am writing in regard to the county's decision to close the Front Royal Golf Course. I, along with many other golfers, play this course frequently and think it is in the best interest of all to keep it open. The course is in the best shape it has been in years, and I believe more golfers are seeing this and responding by playing there more often. The maintenance of this course is in great hands with present personnel, and I feel they deserve the chance to continue to serve the community. The county would be wise to accept their offer and let them operate for a set time and go forward from there. Next is Larry Atkins. I am writing to ask for your support for the Front Royal Golf Club to remain open and allow Virginia Golf LLC the opportunity to run the golf course. Even though I no longer live in Front Royal slash Warren County, I live close by in the Steen City Frederick County area and have been playing golf at the Front Royal Golf Club with my retired Front Royal Warren County golfing buddies regularly for the past several years. We thoroughly enjoy playing this course, and it is in very good condition based on the past and recent efforts of Mr. Ray Nash. We believe that if Mr. Nash and Mr. Nichols are given the opportunity, the course will continue to thrive and be successful for years to come. Thank you for your time and review and hope you will review this request favorably at your special meeting tonight. Next is Jim Cobb. I am in support of keeping the Front Royal Golf Club open. When I retired in two thousand and seven, I started playing golf. Sue and I played all the courses in Warren County, most weeks playing at least three times. At the present, Sue isn't playing as much, but I am playing at least three times per week. For the last five years, I've been a member of Front Royal Golf Course, playing the course several times per week. The course today being maintained by Ray Nash, Ray Nash, is in as good a condition as any course in Warren County. Ray knows what he's doing. In meeting Louis, I found him enthusiastic about managing the course with new ideas. The course has been used by many people for eighty-two years, a real legacy. I did not mention money because it is going to lose some money, but there are other activities that are losing money. I feel a new management system for a Front Royal Golf Club has the potential to be successful. Because of the pandemic, I will probably not be attending the meeting. Next is Jason Atkins. I am writing to request your vote to keep the Front Royal Golf Club open. I could write for hours and pages on the money the county made from the lease to the powder plant, business management, and direct attempts to tank the financials to get rid of the course once the powder plant lease was up. But that wouldn't be beneficial to anyone. What I can tell you is I play the course with a group of twelve other golfers, and many other people do as well. Even more utilize the walking trails, boat ramp, and river access. It would be a shame to abandon all that infrastructure so hastily. I will agree that Parks and Rec and Mr. Lentz has no idea how to run a golf course. That's why I recommend you give Virginia Golf LLC a chance to maintain a great facility for the community. The course has never been in better shape since Ray Nash took over, and the fact that he is willing to invest tells you the course has potential. I request each of you vote yes on the proposal for Virginia Golf. Who knows? Last time the course tried to close, it got really interesting in the courts, and I would expect a similar battle, possibly with the deep pockets of the Carson family involved. I'd say for twenty-five thousand dollars a year, let's cut the losses and give Virginia Golf a shot. And the last email I have is from Jennifer Miller and John McGinnis. Hello, my name is Jennifer Miller. I am a resident of Frederick County, Virginia, and I'm writing regarding the potential closing of a Front Royal Golf Club. We pay for and utilize the boat landing at the golf course on a regular basis during the boating season. This serves as a convenient and family-friendly location for families that want to enjoy the Shenandoah River. I am asking that you approve the proposal by the current employee to take over this historic golf course so the residents and visitors of Warren County can continue to play, excuse me, can continue to enjoy the golf course and the Shenandoah River. Thank you for your support of this proposal. So those are all the emails I have, Mr. Chairman. The first individual who signed up is Alberto Medina.
Good evening, Chairman Wade, members of the board of supervisors. Thank you for holding this public hearing on this matter. I'm Alberto Medina. I live at seven one three Woodron Avenue in town. And I don't think Warren County should be in the golf business or even in the golf course leasing business. And I want you, my local government, to limit itself to the provision of essential government functions. Golf is not an essential function. In Warren County, the public can play ninety-nine other holes of golf at local golf businesses who pay local business taxes. Why is Warren County subsidizing the creation of false competition for those local businesses and taxpayers? Warren County needs to stop poaching the customers of your very own tax-paying constituents, the successful golf businesses. Please stop sinking my tax dollars into a failed golf endeavor at a loss rate of one hundred thousand dollars per year, plus the tax revenue lost from stealing the customers of our local businesses. The free market has spoken, and there is insufficient demand for that course. Not only are there not enough customers to play the course, but there's no market for the course itself. You put out bids for a contractor to take over, and the bid for New Direction Golf Company was an excellent proposal from proven professionals in the golf management industry. The New Direction Golf Company has done an excellent job with the Gauntlet Golf Club in Safford County where I grew up. While you made the right decision to turn down that offer, in the process, you got an excellent picture of what it might take to run this golf course successfully. It would take no less than a sunk cost of one hundred thousand dollars a year. So now we're here to consider the proposal from VA Golf LLC. Warren County, the recent scandal is still on our minds, and this board is still in a phase of rebuilding trust with the community and proving that our local government leaders no longer tolerate a culture of graft and favoritism. You must go above and beyond to avoid even the mere appearance of impropriety. And unfortunately, VA Golf LLC and their proposal are not up to par. VA Golf LLC registered with the State Corporation Commission just last month. The partners do not have a proven track record for successfully saving a failed golf venture. It's interesting to note that they present themselves as Virginia Golf LLC. However, they registered with the SEC as VA Golf LLC. And that's because Virginia Golf LLC, that LLC name is already taken. But there's no record of a fictitious name filing. And unfortunately, if that's the case, that Virginia Golf LLC is being used when it's actually VA Golf LLC, that's against the law and it's a class one missing here. My point is that Warren County cannot afford to risk on an amateur startup. Another problem with the proposal is the inclusion of letters of recommendation from the director of Warren County Parks and Recreation. This is a blatant conflict of interest since the Front Royal Golf Course falls under the Department of Parks and Rec. And this is grounds for automatic disqualification of the VA Golf LLC proposal. It is for this reason that I respectfully request that you vote not to accept this proposal. Leave in place the plan to stop funding the course and let the land revert to private ownership. Thank you very much for your listening ear and thank you for your service to our community.
Mrs. Shiroki, is anyone else available?
Mr. Paul Habbert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, Paul Habbert, one two two one Valley Drive. I don't think much can be said after the gentleman just spoke. Very good points on everything. There was a very good video that was shown, but I felt like I was sitting at a Ken Burns film, but it was a very good video. Who owns the course? Nobody knows. It's been in the courts time and time again. County or family that donated, who owns it? What is the last legal status? Has all legal matters been cleared through the court? Is county pursuing avenues for leasing alternatives before knowing final court ruling? At one time, family members couldn't be located, then the county administration said the family members were found. The previous county attorney said he had letters for family members saying county could do whatever they wanted to. Has the board seen these letters? Has anyone? Can I see them? If this is the case, it doesn't need to be kept, the golf course. It could be turned into anything. The last I saw was a guardian at law was appointed by the court to defend the donation of the golf course by the family, not the family because the family members couldn't be found. There are so many things that are just running around, words and statements and sentences that don't make any sense with this golf course. What is the county's legal status with this golf course at this time? Who owns it? Who's responsible for it? Have we been paying for a golf course since 2005 that we shouldn't be paying our taxes on? Last, it's just not financially justified nor is it a good fiscal responsibility to operate this course at the expense of all the taxpayers of this county for only a few that play it. I disagree with the comment that was stated. It's not only a golf course, it's a total recreational area. It is only about a golf course. The rest of the area is already under county rule, authority, however you want to put it. The county takes care of it. It sounds like with this lease, the county will be taking care of everything on the golf course. Paying $25,000 and doing everything else for it. I heard the words, "The pump is run gently like an old car." Let's be honest, the pump runs automatically or manually. It runs, it shuts off. When I hear the term, I treat it like gently like an old car. To me, that means it's on its last legs. Finally, leasing the course operations have been turned down before. This being the second time around. Mr. Chairman, supervisors, I ask that you deny any lease and that you find out what is going on in the courts and dismantle this golf course if that is possible. Thank you.
Mr. Shiraki, is anyone else?
Bob Meyer.
Thank you, Chairman and Board. I'm here in favor of keeping Front Royal Golf Course open. I've lived in Warren County for about sixteen years now. Twelve of those years, I've been a member. Truthfully, within the last two years, I have not been a member with the shenanigans that have been going on, the uncertainty of what's going on in the golf course. But I have a lot of friends in the community, a lot of neighbors, and a lot of residents that I know throughout Warren County. In the whole time that I've lived here, everyone has five memories of Front Royal Golf Course, what it's done for them, for their family, their children. I go out there and I play golf course frequently. We have the elderly, we have families, we have kids out there playing. Almost anybody that I talk to that golfs, they learn to play golf at Front Royal Golf Course. It's provided them a great opportunity over the years, and I can't think of a better thing for us to provide our community and our residents in Warren County the ability of good, clean fun. They can go out there, they can golf, they can hike, they can fish, they can boat, they can do whatever they want out there and enjoy it. And I think it'd be a travesty if we don't continue to keep it open. Thank you.
Mr. Shiraki, is anyone else wanting to speak?
Eric Cushing.
Gary Cushing, 1106 Fitch Road. Thank you for giving the opportunity to address this topic this evening. I have to again applaud the enthusiasm of the gentleman who made this proposal, and their video was indeed impressive. And I also appreciate and supervise with the members of support from the members of the community and even outside Warren County who have enjoyed golfing in that facility. If I was a golfer, I would want you to keep it open because I would want to get some of my tax monies back by having a golf course subsidized. It is an issue of competitiveness too, because the people who are playing at golf course now didn't have that option, they'd be patronizing the other golf courses in the area. And I don't mean the few that are in Warren County, but the others that are in adjacent jurisdictions. The other golf courses have to pay personal property tax. They have to pay people taxes. These gentlemen don't have that expense as part of their financial consideration. It's just not fair. The whole philosophy of the county being in the golf business is one that I don't support. What's next? Are we going to start a condo company so that we can provide subsidized access to the river? The county already provides a wealth of recreational opportunities beyond golf, and we just can't continue to keep providing more recreation after another. It's time for this one to disappear. It's not just a one-year event here financially, it's an multi-year event. And for it to be said that it can be covered by the existing recreation budget makes me want to think, they've got money sitting someplace they're not using that could apply to this. And yes, I do understand that they've got a golf cart issue that they've got to deal with this year. The proposal that's being made by these gentlemen is not from an experienced golf management company. As previously said, this company was just formed in the middle of May. What we have here is we have two senior citizens who seriously want to have a hobby. And the whole proposal is based on substantial contributions of each of their talents. So if there was any health problems with one of these two gentlemen, then an iffy proposal becomes even more uncertain. It was discussed earlier about the New Direction proposal. A professional golf management company, years of experience, that came before this board and proposed that to make it a financially profitable enterprise would require $100,000 a year. So that puts into question the validity of the minimal contribution they're asking for the county to make. I looked at their financial spreadsheet, and I have to question the revenue estimates they make. I think they're a little unrealistic. In sixteen and seventeen, the average revenue was $240,800. They're proposing in 2020 that the revenue would be $302,000. That's a 25% increase in half a year is already gone. And they're proposing that the revenue in 2020 alone would be $595,000, which would be more than double what the sixteen, seventeen actual was. So this proposal is not professional a bit, and it's philosophically wrong to have the county involved in the competitive with the other golf courses. The financials are iffy, and in addition, as you've seen, that there are lots of other questionable expenses that the county is probably going to be on the hook for. So I respectfully request that you reject Virginia Golf Bid. Thank you.
Mr. Shiraki, is there an additional person that wishes to speak?
Ginger Winkler.
Ginger Winkler, dual citizenship, Charlottesville, Virginia, as well as Bowling Green, North Carolina. I want to start by saying, giving a quote by probably the best president we've had in probably the twentieth century and into the twenty-first century. Well, here we go again. I feel like this is a broken record. I have a number of questions that have come up as I've been listening, and my thoughts in general is just what is going on there? There's, I remember in the last meeting that I attended, and it was voted down, it was said, well, in that, this is still up in the air as to the ownership, there's, we're just going to get rid of this, and then somehow it magically appeared again, which surprised me. I just found out about it recently. I have some confusion as to the participation as a business that's owned directly in competition with Front Royal. He said he felt like it was a compliment, that it was, that we were considered, that they were considered competition. And I don't really feel as though, I don't believe, that if Front Royal closes, it's going to make a huge difference to any of the other courses. It's not breaking us now, it will not make us a huge amount of money otherwise. It comes down, in my opinion, to the principle of the situation here, and that is what was so eloquently posed by some other people here, especially Alberto. The county is, should support essential businesses, should help the citizens out with things that they can't afford or things that are not available. There are a hell of a lot of golf courses in this area that they do not, and it is more affordable than a lot of people believe. It's very nice that a lot of people have the sentiments about the Front Royal Golf Club. I think, I love the idea of it being a sports facility. I think that's wonderful with the river right there, and they have a lot of creative ideas, and the walking trails. But to put something, another, to support this business when there is so much available in the county, it's like you don't need another of the same thing. Come up with something different. Mr. Chairman, what was the total amount that the LLC was requesting per year?
The initial, I think, was in the eighties.
Eighty thousand dollars, approximately? Is that correct?
Initially, and then they have little that down to what it is now, which is what, Doug? Fifteen plus the other ten. And most of the stuff the county would do anyway for the walking, the hiking trails, et cetera.
Well, there's, but there was chemicals there.
Just for the first couple of years to help us with that.
Well, but it's still, there's chemicals.
Edge mowing is the...
There's mowing, I know all about that.
Edge mowing, yeah. It's not, it's edge mowing. It's the trails.
There are a lot of things I would love for the county to pay for for me.
Could I ask you to...
Yes, oh, I'm sorry. I was just trying to engage. So it was like, that feels a little off-center. I have a problem also with projections. We can project all we want, but we can have another 2018 next year. So to give, like, we're going to grow this much this year and this much the next year as pie in the sky. Also, these gentlemen have a lot of wonderful education, experience, can tell they're very bright people, and, but, Front Royal, now Mr. Nash is familiar with the golf course. However, Front Royal is not the rest of the country by any means, and people who have worked our course, that, well, who were managing our course years ago, they were really, they were over in Northern Virginia. It was a completely different world, completely different. It's just a different animal. And I want to make sure that people don't think that I am, that you misconstrue my objection to this as being just trying to put somebody else out. It's not that at all. I feel as though the money in Warren County needs to be spent on much better things. There are so many fish to fry in this county. You need it for the police department, the fire department. There are just tons of things. Those are just basic, basic safety issues, and we're talking about subsidizing a company to compete with all of these other courses. It makes no sense at all. No sense. I had a question also about how much, we're talking about the little clubhouse, which is, it's cute, it's small. How many, one, how many people can it accommodate as far as the banquet room? Two, what equipment is there for the kitchen? Because I know personally how expensive that equipment is, and if you're going to serve meals there and have a chef, there is our red in the proposal, that requires having some very expensive edition of equipment. And if you don't have a dining room large enough to accommodate a certain number of people, you're not going to make a profit. And I know that from personal experience. I also go to restaurants, and I know how hard it is to turn a number there. The, there are nonprofits, and there's fire departments, there's any number of things that we, and the other golf courses, reach out as a community and say, have your benefit here, and we can raise a lot of money for you. And we have done that. We have started a youth program. We are a Nike Golf Learning Center now, which because of the COVID-19, they had to wait till next year, so that was gone away. But we offer that, we offer lessons. All of this is duplication of services. Another thing, we're talking, as you mentioned, the tax benefits. You do not pay taxes on memberships, on greens fees, on, I don't believe, on the driving range. Those are your, the two of those are your two largest pieces of income, the very biggest thing. That's what your bread and butter is, and you don't pay taxes on it. And the property is tax exempt. So to say we're going to help the tax base, I think that's pretty...
Cart fees. Don't you pay taxes on cart fees?
Cart fees, yeah.
Cart fees and also banquets, right?
Banquets, but then again, how many people can you accommodate?
Seventy plus.
So that's not much. You might make, if you're doing well, you make thirty-five cents on the dollar on a banquet, at the best, at best.
Yeah, typically 23% to 35%.
If you're really, really careful, really careful. So I know my numbers on that, too. As far as the pump, I checked, because we are in the same situation with pumps, we're talking 20 to 25 thousand dollars on the pump. I can pretty much guarantee you that. And the age of an irrigation system and the pump system is usually about 15 to 20 years. Twenty-five, you're really stretching out, and it's really expensive to replace that. And you have to have, in order to improve your fairways, which I have heard that the conditions have improved dramatically because of this gentleman right here, but they sunk $300,000 into improving it. Is that correct? Mr. Chairman, is that right?
I can't tell.
That's what I saw on the notes from the last time we were here. $300,000 if everybody wants to get that. That's what it took to improve the conditions. The amount that people pay for greens fees has been miniscule, and it's unsustainable, unsustainable for a golf course to spend that, to charge that kind of money. That's why people love coming out here and playing, and I can walk it, I didn't pay $4 or whatever it was. So that's great, but if those people are looking for that kind of bargain, still, with this coming, that's not going to, that's not going to happen. So that's another argument that I have against it. Someone told me that, we're just talking about entertainment if you will for the county, that Warren County does have a swimming pool, but someone told me, and I don't remember who... But someone told me, and I don't remember who it was, that they lost seventy thousand dollars in one year, is that right?
That's not correct.
What, what kind of numbers do you have?
Ginger, I'd be happy to talk to you outside the public hearing if you want to talk.
Well, I'm just saying, I just, you know, we're looking at all sorts of things. And it's like, that would be one example of a service for the county or for the county's people, and that's losing money. So anyway, all right, that's neither here nor there. Ten employees, that's, granted, they're not highly paid employees. I know what people around here get for the type of work and the type of jobs. Of course, I don't know what you would be paying them, but they're not high, high-end jobs. And I know for a fact that it's very difficult to find employees. We've had a terrible time trying to find employees. And there are lots of job openings everywhere around us, see hiring. So I think there are jobs out there for people to have. What else did I want to say? Do we have an amount of restaurant equipment going back to that, that's in the clubhouse? What is there?
Oh, it's just de-fryer, oven, stove, dishwasher, microwave, freezers, ice maker.
Not for banquets?
Yes.
All right. Just wondered if there would have to be any expenditure to that.
Could we keep it down just a little? I understand that it's, this is very passionate for both sides.
Yes.
But everybody has the right to talk.
I'll just go over some of the notes that I wrote. So that's, I think I've covered everything. But again, I just feel as though that it's not in the county's best interest to keep this open. It just does not make any sense. I have one other question. The petitions that were signed, were those all individual golfers or were there perhaps multiple family members on each, on the signatures?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Hey Ginger, there were a couple that were as a family, but not many. I mean, you can take, you can have a couple.
That's all right. I just, just wondering, so for, for mere numbers.
And there were some boat people on there too. There were some hikers and some walkers and stuff.
Like I said, that's a wonderful idea. That's something we don't have. Could something in Warren County that we don't have that supplies recreation for a broader segment of the population?
Mrs. Sharaki, do we have anyone else?
Good evening, Chairman, Council. My name is Vincent Page. I talked to you and you this weekend. I am very passionate about this course. It sounded like the last lady that, she's kind of scared of it for some reason because it's kind of a competition for what she's doing. These guys are doing an excellent job. If you could get, like, I grew up in Iowa, so my uncle ran the first key program in Des Moines. So if you can get something like that out there, that would be cool too, to make it a full recreational facility. Like I said, these guys are doing a phenomenal job. And everybody that golfs there would be willing to pay a little more to golf because the golf course is in excellent condition, the staff is excellent. I mean, it's just, it's a relaxing place to come. Like, like the first, the first person said, young people can come out there, old people can come out there. It's just a friendly atmosphere, there's no stress. And it's, it's a money maker if you let it, but you guys won't let it for some reason. But I don't get that. So keep it, please.
Mr. Sharaki?
No one else has signed up, Mr. Stanley.
No one else has signed up. Is there anyone that would like to speak?
James Harper, thirty-six, fifty-eight, five hundred in Front Royal. I came to Mike to honestly to learn, and I don't play golf anymore, so I really don't have any care whether they do or don't. But I thought, Mr. May, Mr. Chairman, you had the best question tonight was, you should have more skin in the game. You know, when, he's very accomplished, and I've been in sales for a lot of years for three companies and I've done fairly well. Maybe not number one in Marriott, but I've worked for some large companies like that with that some information handling services. And I just think more skin in the game would, would help my decision. And Ms. Morrison and the people at Shenandoah, do we have to start paying them money? Because I, to me, it doesn't seem fair if we're giving him a good deal or paying. I just want everybody to be fair to everybody. And listening to Mr. Stanley, it seems like I can tell what side he's on, but should we fund them as well? Because I don't want to give her any more money. You know, I don't want to give Shenandoah any more money. But it seems like that's the fair thing if we're giving him a sweetheart deal. But I just think more skin in the game would, things. And I, I did ride by the club several times because I go to the shopping center and I count their cars there. And just do the math, how much are you going to get for a membership? What's the most they've ever had in the last ten years? And do the math of the number of cars that are there. Go by there, some, just peer up when you're at Lowe's or at Walmart, just walk through there and count the cars. When I used to work the demographic and target marketing company, that's one of the things that they did was car counts. And that was an important indicator of how much potential business you're going to have. And so you count the number of cars there and do the math, how much are you going to charge? I hear people saying they're, they are willing to pay more. But if you're willing to pay more, then you go to Shenandoah or Bowling Green. At least I would. Also, as far as chemicals go, I have a chemical, and I played your old course on Crofton. I used to date somebody on Dana Drive, so I played that course. And it's, it's fair, but it's not great. But I use a chemical called Pylix. It cost me seven hundred dollars a pint to get rid of wire grass. And I know Front Royal Country Club has wire grass, all the clubs here do. And it's expensive to get rid of it. Either you're playing on wire grass or you're, you know, nobody wants to play on wire grass. Unless you dig two feet down and cart it away and put new dirt there, you're going to have wire grass. And that's just the things in, the last few years I worked for a oil company in the sold propane and, and diesel fuel and gasoline and the golf courses in Northern Virginia. And I don't know if they consider that expense or not, but, but how soon the fuel goes up, it just seems like a lot of things that they're still not done. And we're halfway into the golf year. It's just something, hopefully you all make the right decision. I'll be either way, but hopefully you make the right decision and, and thanks for the job you all are doing. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
I'm Chris Lynam with the advisory committee. I've spoken before a couple of times, talked to you guys. I've been hearing a lot of stuff here, like Ginger's kind of going by her own experiences with management companies and things of that nature. I've heard people talk like Mr. Kushner talked about the hundred thousand dollars from New Direction. But, you know, they were using a lot of their money for employees. So he was paying his, his keeper to come up here, he's paying management to come up here, he's paying food and beverage to come up here. These guys are taking care of a lot of that cost, which is more than the cost in county that much money anymore. So, and I sort of wouldn't understand, like, everybody keeps talking about the deed and that we're worried about the deed. If it continues to be a golf course, we don't have to worry about it. You don't have to fight, you don't have the thousands of dollars you're going to spend trying to, I don't think anyone actually owns the course. It's deeded to the citizens of Warren County. So if you keep it a golf course, you're not going to have that issue. I think that's pretty obvious. Is that pretty obvious though, that if we keep it as a golf course and Mr. Carson wanted it as the, we should protect?
That's a stipulation. It was in the deed and the title is in the county's name currently, it's being challenged, but it's currently.
But they were still going to it as a golf course as long as we keep it as a golf course. Yeah. So, you know, that kind of just wipes out that issue. And as far as these guys having skin in the game, I don't know if you guys have owned a business or not, but if you own a business, you got skin in the game. They're using their own money, they got a hundred thousand dollars, they're using of their own money to get this thing up and running. I can't see how you can say that they don't have skin in the game. They're going to be out there every day working, man hours, that's skin in the game. So I don't, I don't understand that either, as far as that point goes. And it looks like that this course is going to cost you eighteen thousand dollars a year no matter what. And they're only asking for twenty-five, and it's temporary. I don't think anybody really gets that point that this is just temporary. Give these guys a shot, look at the experience they have. Look at what Mr. Nash has done to this course. It's unbelievable they've done out there. And, you know, Ginger comes up here and she talks about her course, but what is, what is your membership cost, Ginger?
Really?
For, for individual? Sixteen hundred on your website. So we're proposing seven hundred dollars. So what it does, it gives residents in this county affordable, available golf. She has golf tournaments, her course is not always available. Front Royal Country Club is typically always built, Shenandoah is also that way. They're not always available for the average golfer to go out and play. And right now, we're going to, you know, or he's talking about raising the rates, we're going from nine dollars to fifteen dollars. And I don't know if you guys studied the, did you study the analysis I gave you last time about the differences of the courses? Did you see the percentages? How, were they great? I mean, were they far apart?
I checked your, your numbers and some of them were off. Slifox is less, is comparable to what it will be charged at Front Royal.
I just want to know what they had on their website at the time.
And, and out at Bowling Green, there were specials, my husband can go out there and play for twelve dollars. So that, I guess that your prices came directly from websites, but websites aren't always updated or specials are not reflected there. So yeah, I did check all the prices.
But generally, they were correct?
They were some, yeah, there were some, well, the comparisons were that Slifox is pretty much equivalent to Front Royal in terms of pricing.
What about, what about memberships?
They had a special membership that was very reduced because, so let's be honest, everybody is competing for golfers. This is, this industry is not thriving the way that, you know, I, so I did my research and I went out on Golf Digest and I looked up what municipal golf courses, the shape that they're in. These golf courses are, are struggling to get every golfer there that they can get. This is, this industry isn't like thriving like it was twenty years ago. The whole demographic has changed. One of the biggest, I think the biggest changes has been that fathers are spending more time with kids that are in travel sports. So on weekends, they're not golfing. They're out with kids playing basketball, they're coaching their baseball teams. It is a very different environment than it used to be. I respect what you're trying to say however, but the comparisons are, are, Slifox is the same price as Front Royal. So as the proposed rate for Front Royal.
Same thing for eighteen holes and nine holes? Well, what's theirs?
I don't recall, well, you only have nine holes, so.
Well, we have eighteen holes. No, it's a Scottish course, it's a.
So you play two, you play it twice, correct?
Which are different tee boxes?
So it's similar. It's similar in pricing. It was fifteen, fourteen, fifteen dollars.
For?
For whatever the, I guess it was eighteen. That, whatever your comparison was, I called them up and asked them.
Twenty after three.
Twenty after three?
Pardon me?
Twenty after three.
After three? Yeah.
That may be, that, that wasn't, I didn't get that information. I just asked them how much it costs.
Ask them what you didn't want to go.
Well, I just took it right off their website, a pair of dollars. There was a huge difference as far as.
But I did, I did review your numbers, I did.
Yeah. And there was a huge difference in memberships and, and it's like you've been said before, nobody wants to go out there and play this course as long as it's always in the limbo. You know, and it, it's been a successful course for eighty-two years. I don't get when people get up here and say that this course has no business. It's been a business for eighty-two years. It's the second longest running continuous business in Warren County. The only one that's been open longer is Skyline Drive. It's kind of like Haverhill opened one year after that. Stokely and LeBrecht's been in business for seven, four years. I just can't see why people want to take a business that's been here for eighty-two years and get rent. You know, golf course, I don't know if you guys know this or not, but if you think that if you're just going to close this down and somebody's going to come along and say, hey, let's reopen this course, that doesn't work that way. Once this course is gone, it's gone. It's never coming back. And it's pretty sad. So I, I really just don't think that everybody's really looking at the opportunity that this place has. And these guys are looking at that opportunity. They're willing to put the man hours in. I don't know why you just don't give them a shot after eighty-two years. Get these guys, give them a shot. What have you got to lose? Twenty-five thousand dollars a year, what are you losing that? You know, talk about skin in the game. I mean, you're actually, you want to get rid of it and they want to take it. I don't see the problem. So I just want to throw my two cents in there, just let you know what I thought about it and it just be a travesty if this thing actually closes. And once it closes, like I said, it's never back, it's never coming back. Just want to let you know what I thought. Oh, and one other thing too, there's a lot of people here that are here that probably don't want to speak. Could somebody show your hands if you're in support of the country club staying open just because you didn't want to speak?
I'd like to speak.
Can we get a count on that possibly?
Everybody put your hands back up again. A little strong.
All choice. There, there's other options. It's not a yes, no. If you play golf, you raise your hand.
It's pretty simple.
Under, under what condition? Stay open. I just want to be with him.
If you want to speak, sir, you can, you can get a line, speak.
Yes, sir. Hi, my name is John Green. I lived in Warren County all my life. When I was young playing sports, golf wasn't my sport. I couldn't afford to play golf. So I became a baseball, basketball, football player. I started playing golf five years ago. Started out as a macho tank, driving a rain, stupid hitting the ball farther. And I got the bug coming up with it. And you know where I actually learned how to play golf at? At this golf club that I knew, never knew exists. And I lived in Warren County all my life, never knew it exists. When I went out there to play and the price was something was comfortable for me. Because I, I just learned how to play golf. I can't go play golf at Bowling Green and the AM because they were kicking off the course. I'd be moving too slow. But here where I play at Front Royal, people help you out, they walk you. I love the game. And the Front Royal course, I started playing five years from nothing. But I saw one end up playing. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yeah, if we could just, Ray and I've had a chance to confer about your, your earlier questions. Absolutely. Will you give us another opportunity?
Five minutes.
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Did we get a head count on the number of people that?
So it was, I believe, over twenty, but I did not get any fact. Roger, did you get any fact?
We got a couple outside of the golf course. I got our.
Ian had a lead to define the question. It's not a binary choice. It's not wanting to lease it to you or to keep it in the county or to close it or to give it back to the heirs. There's, there's too many options to go yes or no.
And that was.
They're supporting. They're just, they're just supporting. They're just raising their hand if they want, that's it. They didn't want to speak, that's it.
I ain't voting.
Yeah, just, we just want to get a sense of, because some people don't like to speak. Who, who supports keeping golf courses open? Yes or no? That's a binary question.
And it was fifteen individuals by my count.
Fifteen plus the people you read off, which is probably.
Oh, the, I received thirteen emails, twelve emails in favor, so.
Emily, just, I need to speak a little bit earlier. I had two phone calls, I didn't get a name on it. They were in favor of the course. And I just need to let you know that there's. And I just need to let you know that there's two more to add to that.
So this is just a straw poll. Yeah, clearly it's a straw poll, Ray. This is not scientific, Paul. But the 15 here, they were able to take time out of their busy days to, to, to make the effort to show up. I think, thank you all. You're all, you're all special people. You all come out there and it is a family, you know?
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Sorry, sorry, please talk to...
So thank them all because they took the time.
It is a difficult time. I'm sorry, tugging on heartstrings, I appreciate that. We've got a decision that we've got made.
Yes, sir.
And I, I appreciate it.
And I respect that and that's what we're here for because we're going to answer your hard question that you asked earlier. But I appreciate these guys so much because it's a family out there and it's new family changing every day. Okay, so that's, you know, I'll quit tugging on heartstrings because I think you have that picture, okay, right? We're talking fiscal responsibility now. So Ray and I've had a chance to confer, confer a little bit. Sidebar on your earlier question. And you asked, what else could you possibly give on? And we really feel like we're giving a lot. And I think Doug can speak to that because he's worked really hard on it. He's put numerous man-hours into this. But Ray, why don't you just go ahead and tell what you came up with?
Well, I think the pesticide was an issue, so I mean, we're willing to not worry about perhaps deciding a few little slots. We certainly figured that one out. Snow plowing, we figured that one out too.
So it's a space that we can, you know, give and take back and forth. So if that's a big spend for the county, take that off your plate. We're already taking $25,000 off, or $24,000 for the golf cart lease that you have to pay the cancellation fee anyway. And I understand cancellation fees because I collect them all the time. They will collect that. That's, that's, that's liquidated damages. And then somebody made a point, I think it was Ginger. Ginger, I appreciate you because you really came up with, I thought you were a very fair, you know, your marks. And I appreciate that and I hopefully look forward to being at Break Business Park with you down the road. Having said, whatever that figure is, that was lost over the years, whatever we paid to get it back to where it is now. I mean, is the county, to, to, to Chris Lang's point, is the county really willing to throw all that away? So you're going to throw away, let's say $24,000 for that golf cart lease for that liquidated damages right off the bat? Say, where does that go? It goes to Maryland. So you're going to give $24,000 to Maryland, A. And B, you're going to prevail everything you put into the course to bring it back to where it is today. And I just don't think that makes sense, especially because we're, you know, maybe we're not, you know, the, the pointy-toity, you know, new, you know, golf course management company, but we're experienced people and we can make that place successful. And you're getting more than you would get and plus you couldn't even accept their proposal because they wanted $100,000 a year. So you're getting so much more with us, plus you're getting 10 free park rangers to support the rest of them. Tax base, historical tourism, there's so many value adds to bring to the table. So, you know, that's my five minutes of fame, Walt. I mean, I appreciate you, you know, letting me come back up here. Any other thing on that?
No, I will do a good job.
Yeah. We don't want to compete. We want to support all the businesses in the county.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Mr. Gabbard, would you like to come back up?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It, it's a pretty hot issue, I, I get it, I, you know. I played golf. I'm 65, I can still hit a 240-yard drive. But it comes, if it comes about, you know, people who don't want the tax money going to this and people who don't care that the tax money goes to this to keep it open. And I get that, I'm willing to, I get that. Golf is an enjoyable game. It, it's a fun game. I've heard my share of clubs in the past, I know, I get it. But it's, you know, how, how do you divide? How do you divide? There's, there's so much here that's being said that, that you don't have a firm dollar on. $25,000 to lease it to them. But then everything else that, that, that's being said is, oh, well, we think we can get it for this or we think we can do it for this. There's no thinking. There's no, if you're thinking about it, you haven't sat down and planned and looked at the numbers. Numbers is the game. Numbers, financial numbers. You don't stand and say, oh, well, I think we can go do it for this or we can, we can replace the pump, I think, for this or, or what. It's not how you run a business. You know, I'm sorry, but that's just not how you run a business. You know, I, I don't envy you all with the decision you have to make. Don't make it, put it out to the vote to the taxpayers. Taxpayers who don't want it, it goes away. Taxpayers who do want it, it's majority rules. Don't you all make the decision. But, you know, I, I'm for one that I love the game of golf, but I don't think my tax dollars should go towards keeping the golf course. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak?
Comment that I would like to make? Someone brought it up to my attention today that in the Northern Virginia Daily, maybe Mr. Stanley could talk to this, that there was, in three months, there's an exit strategy that they walk away. What, can you tell supervisors what that is about?
I believe in the proposal, there was a 90-day clause in there of that critical...
Yeah, it's just because, well, I think, you know, I think Walt spoke to that, Supervising, Supervising spoke to that earlier and he said, he mentioned a point about what if the family comes, right? So, yeah, I mean, this, this is from our family attorney, Jim. He said, we're going to go to someone down there, that's all that is.
Where's Hamson?
In the ring. Yeah, in the ring with chair.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Final call. If there's no one else in the audience that would like to speak, this public hearing is now closed. But it's the pleasure of the board.
I moved up to the county administrative, the overall administration lease management agreement. It was the agreement with VA Golf LLC to lease and manage this Front Royal golf course for a term of three years, three renewals after this cease option for total 12 years. If such agreement contained the terms of the Warren County recommendations in the VA Golf LLC contract request spreadsheet, that the agreement will terminate in the event that it is ruled that Warren County does not have title to the property and that the agreement contains such other terms that may be required by the county administrator consultation with the county attorney. And I guess also, if I understood correctly, the VA Golf, they were going to take out the request for the $5,000 in chemicals. So that would be $10,000 per year plus possible couple other costs. So that would be the, the main cost, is that correct then? Okay, so that's, so just to make that special note, so that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
We get at least a second just for the discussion.
Do we have additional discussion on it?
May I discuss it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so like I said, there are a lot of numbers out there. There are some costs that we may not be aware of that may come down. They were limited on those expenditures as well. But right off the bat, they're taking over the carts, which we're going to pay $20,000 if we don't accept this proposal. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe that's the amount. We have to take a look at the lease, I haven't looked at it in a while, but that's the fifth year we're paying approximately $20,000 a year for the cart lease. There's one year left on that lease.
But VA Golf is going to pay that lease out. So there's $20,000, if we do not do anything, we're going to put that out. We don't want anything back. And then we're limited to an annual cost of $10,000. So we save 20 and we pay 10, so we've come out 10 ahead. Plus we'd have to pay that next year too. So just throwing that out there. And again, it seems like VA Golf LLC is taking the majority of risk. The other thing too is, and I would think that Ms. Coler and Ms. Oates, since they're on the tourism board, they can see the benefits of adding this to be one component of the overall tourism initiative to promote the county. Thing is too, and I don't know what happens with the boat landing, which I think there was at least one email where they said they, the people actually use that more so than the golf. The other question too is, I looked it up, I know there's been one before too, as far as putting it back in the tax rolls. I think the tax assessment on that property with the building, maybe another building, and the 55 or 60 acres came to about $1.5 million. And at a current rate, $0.65, $0.66, that equates to about $10,000 a year in, in tax revenue. But I guess the question I had too, and I don't know what implications that would have. Now, first off, you've got 30 acres between the railroad tracks and the river. And I don't think you can do anything with that because it's in the floodlands. There may be 30 acres for something to be done with. But then what, what does it mean to have a Virginia State Historic Landmark designation and that property be developed? They have to go through a procedure in order to get that removed in order for them to do something?
The Virginia Landmarks Registry or the National Register does not limit or restrict you from developing this property. You could, you could still develop it commercially or culturally, residentially, it would not prohibit it. Certainly it diminishes, maybe they take it off the register because you've done something different with the property, but it's not like the historic district in downtown Front Royal that says you can't build or can't do something. So there's no, it's not a conservation use, but there's no limit on that. The limit is the deed. It says what that property can be used for. Now, if the course of family got it back and approached Warren County and took that off, be a different story at that point.
And again, that's the question too, as far as the ownership. When the county took over operations in 2005, we did do a, we did the title insurance, correct?
Yes, sir.
So that's being, that's headed in court in October, I believe you said. And all that is between the, the title company insurance and the heirs. So it's not really costing the county anything to proceed with those hearings or anything, stuff like that. And I think as we're up to, it seems like to me that if it was, it may be a mood issue, it could still remain as a, with golfing as a component of the other recreational activities. And plus, I think there's some caveat on there too, if it does come, well, I actually read that. If it does become part of the heirs, it kind of has additional terms in it to allow VA LLC to get out of the view. The other thing too, I don't know if that matters or not. With the property itself going back to the heirs, and obviously wouldn't be able to move it, but the clubhouse would be part of that. And that seems like that's an improvement. Would that come to any type of play as far as they got it back? Would you get recompensated for the clubhouse?
Again, to reiterate, it was given to the citizens of Front Royal, Warren County. There's dispute over the title. I, I, that's not a question I think I or Mr. Hammond could answer at this point.
I understand. You're just someone thrown out there to see if that makes any sense or not. The other thing too, I think somebody brought up, this wasn't actually put out for an RFP after we had the last, correct?
That's right.
Somebody mentioned that they hadn't seen it, so that's what I thought we'd done. And as long as it remains a golf course, and again, you may have the, you answered this question. As long as it remains a golf course and there's some other entity running it other than the county, I would think that would still adhere to the original gift from back in 1938. The other thing that's brought up too, I don't know, I know it's brought up in on golf fees, driving range fees, certain things, there's no tax involved with that. But, and I, as I looked at the, the, the agreement, but what about property tax? Is VA Golf LLC responsible for that in VPO?
So property to front real estate or are you talking about personal property?
Both.
So anything that's in the county's name, so real estate is property in the building would, that would be tax exempt because that's still in our name.
Okay.
Eventually, the cards, I'm not sure as far as they would be, once the lease was in their name. But as long as the facility is in our name, that would not be taxable. But VPO, meals tax, sales tax, all those other taxes would still have to be paid. And currently, so patrons right now, even though it's county-owned, those pay sales tax and, and meals tax when they visit the clubhouse and purchase items.
Tax of the golf carts.
I think tax of golf carts.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I've thought about this a lot and I understand and you are very passionate. It makes this a lot harder to make a decision. But I feel very strongly that government shouldn't be in competition with private industry. And, and that is exactly what this is. Plus the ownership issue, the fact that there's been 15 years of failure. Whether that's because the people that were running it before gave it as much passion as you sound like you would want to give it, I can't say. I too am not a golfer. Coach swinging, tried, I wasn't interested, but I have nothing against people golfing. And, but I feel it's unfair, like Mr. Harper brought up, I had said the same thing. How do you subsidize one and not all? It doesn't seem fair to do that. It's, well, I don't want to take away your affordable golfing now. So my proposal is, in order to keep the requirement of it running as a golf course and to keep you having affordable golf, it's, it's a park to me. There's, there's trails, there's the boat landing. I want people to have access to the river just like they have now. So why not maintain it at a less quality than what it is now? Because I did some research, even though I'm not a golfer. Golfing started in the 15th century in Scotland. And I'm pretty sure they didn't have immaculate courses. But they loved the game and it progressed through the years. So why can't we go it and have it in a decent shape and let people go out and golf for free? I, I don't have a problem with that. And it's not a cost to the taxpayers anymore than any of the rest of our recreational parks are. So to me, that would solve everybody's problem. That's, that's just my thought.
Any other questions or concerns? Again, do we have a second? Do we have a second? Motion favors. Is that correct? Caitlin?
I would say, yes, Mr. Hammond. Without a, without a second, it can't be, a vote cannot be had on the question.
Thank you.
Do you have to have a motion just to put this to rest? Saying that we do not accept this proposal?
That would be the claimant's side.
Uh, yes. For clarity, for clarity of the record, I think it would be beneficial if there was a motion brought before the court. Sorry, brought before the court, for the judge to consider if it is just an outright denial.
Do we have another motion? Do we have another motion?
I'll make the motion that, and it's not on here. I'm not sure why the, the rejection. There's no rejection on here, Mr. Stanley.
I'm sorry.
Um, yeah. Um, I will, I move, um, that, that the board reject the, um, the proposal of VA Golf LLC, um, and that we, you know, proceed with whatever we need to do to maintain the golf, the, the, um, park.
Is there a second?
I have a second, yeah.
Uh, could we get a roll call, please? I have a question, please.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, so this is going to pass. So what happened July 1?
July 1, we shut down the clubhouse, we stopped, um, operations of the golf course itself. Um, I will get staff, directed and brands go back there, but, um, give Mr. Lentz and start to work on a, um, mo- modified maintenance plan, but all of the employees that are there at the golf course will not, um, be working there at the golf course. We can use other staff to do some push hogging and periodic know-it-all. We just got to figure out kind of what our other staff can do, um, as far as the maintenance of the facility. Obviously will not be a priority because we takes care of the other buildings and schools, everything else in the community, so, um, staff will have to put together a maintenance plan and in part of that plan will look at the frequency of, of maintenance.
Can we pay $20,000 for the golf cart lease?
We will, we will move to, uh, try to get out of that golf cart lease as quick as we can and, and pay the exit fee.
That's all, thank you, sir. Mrs. Sharaki, could we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
No.
Ms. Oats?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Aye.
Ms. Colours?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Question carries. Next item on our agenda.
We're just here to take a five minute break because I'm sure a lot of these people here don't want to stay with the next item.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you everybody for coming.